Study session in order. This time we have surplus property, safety and healthy, or safe and health, safety and health.
Board members, in your packet you will find details on some AEDs and a desk that are being requested to be used as surplus property. The accordance to TCA, we are recommending the school board that these items be declared surplus. The AEDs are outdated and have been replaced with a new, a new model and the desk as well.
Okay. Twenty, two thousand twenty-five, twenty-six special course application, first read, Dr. Shayna Dowdy.
Yes, and so I will, I will kick that over to Dr. Dowdy, but just for your information, every year, the Department of Education has a list of courses that, that we choose from and anything outside of that, that we are doing special in CMCSS, we do need to make that request each year, so she has a couple of requests.
Good evening, Board. In your packet, you're going to find detailed information and standards about the peer assistant and leadership and military history courses. These are both special courses that we would like to submit to the state for approval. These are currently being offered in CMCSS schools and with your approval and state approval, this will allow us to continue to offer both of those courses in our high schools.
Okay. Item three, teacher tenure consideration, first read.
I'll kick it over to our Chief Human Resource Officer, Melissa Isid, to discuss the teachers that are up for tenure this year. For Director of Schools to recommend a tenure, a teacher be granted tenure by the local Board of Education, the teacher must first be eligible for tenure under the law. A list of eligible individuals is then presented to the Board for consideration and approval. This year, the Board was provided with a list of one hundred and twenty-three candidates recommended for tenure based on meeting qualifications set forth by the state of Tennessee. Of the one hundred and twenty-three candidates, sixty-four from elementary, twenty-eight from middle school, twenty-nine from high school and two at the district level.
Who makes up the Board that's going to be doing the review of those teachers? How do you compile the Board that's going to be reviewing those teachers for a tenure?
So, the qualifications for tenure?
No, 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 no. The composition of the Board that's going to be monitoring, be making the decision on those people.
That's you all.
No, you're going to bring us a list.
Correct, and that's in the packet, but that is based on the criteria. There's five options for them to be eligible for, for tenure.
Okay.
And so if they meet one of those five criteria, then we bring that to the Board for review and approval. So if they're on that list, they've met one of the five criteria, one of the five routes for tenure approval.
So there is no Board that actually review that, that's based on their record?
Well, Human Resources reviews it, but the state sets the requirements and so we have to review each candidate to see that they meet one of those pathways and then that's how we submit them.
You say "we," that means more than one, right?
Human Resources, yes, so.
The whole team?
It goes through several people, yes, several checks in there to make sure that we have everyone.
So, so essentially it's, it's a rubric and so the state outlines that. So, we can, we can kind of go through that and make sure that you have all of that, which I believe you do, but essentially if, if I'm a teacher and I have taught so many years, I've met this criteria, then I am automatically eligible for tenure and that's what we bring to you all. But it is just essentially a, a list and as long as a teacher meets one of those and we just double check. If there is a teacher who believes they qualify for tenure, then, then, and we have missed, then we would certainly double check. But, but typically we have a, a pretty hardy review of, of what that looks like.
And one of the main pieces of data obviously is the, the LOEs that they receive. So, an LOE of a four or five, that's the qualifying criteria and then there's different routes, whether they've come from another LEA where they had had tenure before. If, you know, straight out of five-year probation, there's different, different levels and we check for each one of those routes. And we track them from the moment they're hired and every year we track and, and add that. If it's, if they're four years, we know the next year they're going to be up for review. And so, out of the ones we reviewed, I believe we reviewed a hundred and forty-five eligible candidates and a hundred and twenty-three met the criteria.
You still didn't answer my question, but it's okay.
We'll, we'll get with you, but essentially it, it's not a, it's not a judgment call, so to speak.
Right.
It is just a list and so every one of those teachers, if, it's the list, they either make it or they don't. It's not like a packet you submit that, that's a qualitative essay or something that we're judging, that's not the case.
And, and I can give you the five, the five options if you want, so.
No, I don't need the options. I trust you guys for the options. I believe that you do right by the options. But who in your office is responsible for making the decision other than you? I know you said "we," so more than one, is it five, is it six, is it ten?
So, it starts with our certified team, our certified reps, they go through the ones that, that onboard all the certified teachers. They go through and pull the list from our employee database that shows the number of years and if they are at that year eligible mark, then it goes to Michael Tharp and he reviews them to determine, once he gets the LOEs, did they meet the LOE requirement? And then he submits that to me and then that goes to you all for approval.
That's what I'm asking, thank you.
Sorry.
Okay. Item four, state report card.
Yes, I'd like to ask Dr. Kimmy Saharsky to come forth. As you know, the state report card was released right before Christmas and we have, we have already publicly shared those results, but Dr. Kimmy is going to go through that with you all quickly, just to see if you have any questions.
Glorious evening. So, there is a, a set of guidelines that we must follow in order to meet the rules for the grades that go into the report cards that are posted to the state page. That data comes to the district, it's validated by the accountability team and then we send it back and then it's posted. That this data includes all achievements, so any tests that the children take, so all content. Remember, this is different than the AMO data that we go through where it's math and, and ELA. This is all subjects. It's the growth for all of those subjects. It's the subgroup, when they talk about the lowest twenty-five percent, they take the performance of all the students in the district and those that scored at the bottom twenty-five percent, they measure how they grow the following year. The goal is to catch everybody up, get us accelerated. So that's a part of this measure. And then if you're a high school, part of it is the college and career readiness. Each of these, based on the level, so you're going to have, the elementary and the high school have different kinds of aggregates. They put the score together, they weighed it and then based on what the weight of the score is, a letter is assigned to the school. And so here are the key points that you want to keep in mind. All the subjects are in them. Obviously, ELA and math, which are the goals, the strategic work of the state and the district as well, are weighted slightly heavier than science and social studies. They do school-wide TVAS, so it's the growth across all of the subjects for them. And then they do the bottom twenty-five percent of growth for those kids, how much forward that they grew. And then for the college and career readiness, they're looking at the kids that scored twenty-one on the ACT. That makes you all automatically college and career. Other things like the percent of kids that are participating in AP and how they did, industry certification and the ASFAB, the military tests achieving a qualifying score, which is currently thirty-one. And so here are our grades for this year, the elementaries and then the middle and high. CMCSS has no Fs, I believe we have four Ds. And so the overview of this for our district is ninety percent of the schools received an average better, average or better letter grade, which would be A, B, or C. That means you've done what you need to do or above it, which is an increase from seventy-three percent on the last round, so we're, we're moving forward. Nearly half of our schools performed in the top categories, earning an A or a B. The number of schools earning a D decreased by sixty-four percent. As I said, there's, I think there's only four and we have no F. CMCSS has not had an F during the entire time. Questions?
Thank you. Alright, item five, goal number three, provide all students opportunities to build academic and techno, technical and professional skills using ready graduate milestones.
Yes, Dr. Becky Paget and Dr. Dana Payne are going to present on goal three tonight.
Good evening. I'm Dana Payne, Director of Career and Technical Education and I'm going to start you off with our points of improvement for providing all students opportunities to build academic, technical, professional skills using ready graduate milestones. So we'll start off by talking a little bit about what we mean when we talk about academic knowledge. That is the understanding of core content, meaning reading, writing, math, science, and social studies. Our technical skills, when we talk about those, are the specialized knowledge or expertise needed to complete tasks in a specific career field. So, when I talk about technical skills in, say, construction, I might be talking about using a hammer. Or when I talk about technical skills in cosmetology, I might be talking about how you hold scissors. But we also know that academic skills can be used in real-world contexts and then they become a technical skill. So the way that I use geometry in my construction class now has become a, a technical skill. We also talk about professional skills. We can call those soft skills or employability skills and those are the things that are transferable across all career fields. So, things like collaboration or things like being on time are things that we would consider professional skills. So, our ready graduate milestones, you may be familiar with this graphic, but this graphic shows us all the way from kindergarten through high school, different kinds of milestones along the way that we expect students to achieve in order to be ready when they leave us. And so we're going to point out a few of those on here and talk about the work that we've done with those this school year. So, one of them is for students to participate in middle school career exploration courses to identify potential career pathways based on their aptitudes and interests. We have done a lot of work with our sixth and seventh grade students around a program called Pathful Explorer. In that program, students have weekly lessons that include things like interest inventories, career cluster explorations, short occupational video clips and activities that build their success skills. Students do this once a week in their advisory classes in sixth and seventh grade. They also can access the Pathful Explorer platform anytime they want to at home through ClassLink. In addition, our eighth grade students are doing advisory lessons in U-science and U-science is something that helps our students to understand their aptitudes. So this is a series of brain games where students actually are learning, are they visual processors? Or are they good at determining things that are similar and different? And it's important that our students understand their aptitudes because interest alone doesn't help them to find career paths where they're going to be successful. So we want students to really understand what they're good at so that they can make connections between what they're good at and the goals that they have moving forward. Really then, what we want to do is, is put those two things together to help them to develop realistic plans. New this year and super exciting, we have career explorations labs in all of our middle schools. This is a nine-week related arts course that students can take in sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. So it's not just something that they're taking one time, but they can take it multiple times throughout their middle school time. And this is a, a hands-on exploration of technical skills. So students are getting to actually touch real tools in real-world scenarios. You can see some pictures here and these are of our students where they are learning what it's like to hold a baby and feed it or wash it if they're interested in child development careers. They're learning about fire management services and how they would set up a perimeter around a fire if they were a firefighter. They're doing short things with casting a leg, say, to see if medical field might be of interest to them. So it's a rotational model. Students spend ten days on each activity and so each year they are then able to actually put their hands on at least three different career-type activities so that they can really learn what they might be interested in when they get to high school. And so really we've set these up so that the programs or the modules that are offered at each middle school are actually aligned to the modules or the CTE pathways that are in the high school to make that real seamless connection for students as they move forward. So that's brand new this year and really exciting. So those things coupled together, U-science, those pathful lessons and then that career explorations courses will help our students to be able to develop ready graduate plans with their school counselors. That will help those seamless transitions from our eighth grade into our ninth grade, making our students more successful throughout the year.
In transitioning to the ready grad status, the milestone, we are speaking directly to dual enrollment and AP courses next. Dual enrollment are college courses that are provided at the high school level. We partner with various institutions and are able to provide those courses to our high school students through the dual enrollment grant. You will see here our numbers, our historical numbers with dual enrollment. In, from 2022 to 2025, you will see an increase in the number of options available for students, that's a good thing. And you will also see an increase in the number of student opportunities to take these classes. What a total enrollment means for us, it doesn't mean that there are one thousand six hundred individual students in these classes. It means that these are student opportunities to take these classes. So you may have one student taking multiple dual enrollment classes and therefore that student may count three times in this number. But either way, you will see a trend moving in the right direction for our students to access early college classes. And specifically, our dual enrollment partners are Austin P., Tennessee College of Applied Technology, Nashville State, and you will see here UT Martin. Also, advanced placement courses are college-level courses available to our high school students, grades nine through twelve. You will see the historical here of the number of, of enrollment options for our students as has increased over the last three years. You will also see that AP exams taken have increased as well as the AP exam pass rate. And for any one of us that are familiar with AP exams, those are very difficult exams to take and that pass rate, seeing that increase over the years is a really positive things for our students as that guarantees them college-level credit upon enrollment into a university, so that's a good thing. Also, toward our ready graduate milestones, our enrollment into Junior Reserve Officer Training Program, our JROTC program, historically our stu, our, our schools, we have roughly about thirteen hundred students enrolled each year in JROTC. That's freshmen through senior levels and so you will see this year we have twelve eighty-eight.
Another piece of this is our industry certification attainment. You can see this year we offered, or last school year actually, we offered more than thirty different industry certifications to our students with one thousand eight hundred and sixty-three certifications actually earned. So that was an increase of almost seven hundred students earning a certification more than the year prior. We also had a eighty-six percent pass rate for students who actually sat for certifications that earned them.
And then moving on up, we will see that another ready graduate milestone is Dr. Saharsky mentioned earlier, is that ACT score. And so supports for ACT in our district, we have a plethora of supports for our students. We have ACT prep courses, we have teacher curriculum resources that are available to teachers on the Curriculum Hub. We provide as a district, practice ACT test for all sophomores and juniors each school year so they get to sit in a simulated environment and take a practice ACT. And as a result, they get a practice ACT score that would be simulated as if they were getting a real ACT score. And then we also have a CMCSS ACT parent resource where parents can access free resources for their student at home or outside of school. And then our district, as provided through the state, is offers, offers all of our students a senior retake opportunity. So, all students take as a Tennessee state requirement, the ACT and they take it spring of their junior year. And as a result, the state allows us to offer a retake opportunity for seniors fall of their senior year. So that's another opportunity for our students.
So we really hope that our students leave CMCSS with all three of these indicators because if they do, they have a competitive advantage, no matter what they choose to do when they leave us. And so work-based learning opportunities afford our students the, the option to really apply what they've learned in real-world scenarios. We've got a multitude of work-based learning opportunities for students, both in traditional high schools and outside of traditional high schools. And so things like our construction students building portable classrooms or our students in cosmetology and barbering actually earning cosmetology licenses and having salon and barber shop services. Or our students in our digital art classes who are doing media art and marketing campaigns for nonprofits all over the city are examples of times that our students actually get to put their knowledge into real-world scenarios. In addition, we have expanded the number of work-based learning opportunities that are internships. We started a few years ago, really just in our CMCSS Operations Department and you can see now the number of business and industry partners who've come onboard and taken our students in, in internship opportunities so that they are working with these business partners a few hours a day and then they are attending their classes at TCAT in the afternoons to be more prepared when they leave. Finally, we talk about the work ethic distinction. The work ethic distinction is an opportunity for seniors to showcase that they have learned or earned all of the academic, technical, and professional skills in one place. You can see that that rubric includes those three different categories and students actually earn points towards each of, each of the categories. And so there are a total of forty possible points that a student could earn and if they earn at least thirty-two of those points, which would be eighty percent of them, then they can earn the work ethic distinction as a senior. So that concludes our presentation on goal three, which is providing students opportunities to build academic, technical, and professional skills using the ready grad milestones. Questions?
In this enrollment sixteen hundred and one for the, for this school year, I know you said that you could take some of those, some of those students might have multiple. Do you know how many students are actually?
I don't know that off, offhand, but I do have that data and I would be happy to share it with you.
Okay, thank you.
I will get that to you guys.
Okay, my, my question, you said that in, in the junior year, a high school, a stu, high school student can take the ACT test. For, for the record, I would assume. But then the high, when they reach the twelfth grade, they get an option to retake the test. Which one applies the, which one applies the force toward their college career readiness?
Both, the higher score of the two. So if a student chooses to take it again and they score higher, then they would take the higher score.
But if the higher score was in eleventh grade, they'd get that one?
Yes, sir.
Okay, that's what I was concerned.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, item six, EL fourteen, Administrative Policy Review, first read, Mark Nolan.
Good evening. You should have in your packet a proposed addition to the Board Governance Policies. As you remember, Mr. Mayberry had requested several months ago that we put this on, kind of start the ball rolling. We went through, reviewed policies, you know, at the Board Retreat and this is kind of a culmination and this is his proposed addition to the policies, which is adding the executive limitation of Executive Limitation fourteen. So we wanted you to have it so you had a chance to read it and be ready to discuss it in two weeks. So, that, that's why, that, so you've got the draft and we'll discuss it in two weeks and, and possibly Board vote on it or, okay, anybody have questions?
I guess my question would be, if we do have a question, we should contact you?
You can contact me, yes. And then we'll discuss any questions or details next meeting, but you can contact me before.
Gotcha, okay.
Okay. Comments from county commissioners?
Yeah, I just, just wanted to say I really appreciate the, the presentation there, especially the part about TCAT. I have personal experience with that. Ms. Constance Brown does an amazing job over there. Woman that knows every one of her students, their strengths, their weaknesses, really truly cares about them. We participated in that program as, as a company, had an intern, it was great for us, great for them. And anything we can do, you know, at the county commissioner, y'all can do at the school board, continue to support that program and grow it would be awesome because we are in desperate, in desperate need of folks with technical skills, plumbers and welders and auto mechanics and truck mechanics and HVAC and appliance repair. And it pays really well and we need good folks, so great program and just, I, I love it. So I just want to encourage us to continue to support that. Thank you.
Other business?
How does a business get on the list to be one of the partners for the work-based learning?
We can add you. Just let us know, if you're just, if you'll just reach out and let us, any business is interested.
Okay.
And we can get you in contact with the person who does that work-based learning work and have conversations about where that work fits into our focused elective groups and CTE programs.
Can you explain, just really quickly, how that works with the business? Like, does the business pay them? Can you explain that a little bit?
It can work in a variety of ways. It's clearly defined in state law and so Amy Jackson and Dr. Payne can sit down and go through any business and go over that information. It's very explicit, obviously, because kids are involved and lots of training for the teacher to make sure that things are followed through appropriately and so it, it's very in-depth, but we're happy to spend time sharing that information with anybody.
Awesome, thank you.
Jimmy?
Well, I'd just like to say that I wasn't trying to challenge your integrity. I just had a question and it was in my mind and I just couldn't, couldn't leave it alone. I know that each of you, whenever you do, whatever you do for the students, you do it from the heart. I can feel it, I see it and I have seen it down through the years of the work that you've done and I'm very proud to be a part of this work. But if I have a question and if it's deep, it might be, sound deep to some, might sound like I'm trying to intimidate some. I don't never try to intimidate anybody, but I want you to know that I, I appreciate you finally giving me the answers that I needed. But that's, that's who I am. And Dr. Luna, you have a team that is second to none. That's the reason why we are level five district today. Thank you.
Okay, other business?
Okay, it's my turn. Good evening, Board members. The, this week was the first week back for students from holiday break and I'm happy to say that we went on time every day. And our educators have already had students engaged in rigorous lessons. As a reminder, the application period for the schools and programs of choice will begin on January fifteenth. We want to ensure that families know all about the free opportunities for our students such as our National Blue Ribbon Programs at Spanish Immersion, Middle College at APSU, as well as our K-12 Virtual, our Early Technical College at TCAT, More Magnet STEM, as well as nine different high school academies. There will also be some open enrollment options based upon staffing and building capacity. Information has been sent to families and we, they will have approximately a month to, to complete that application with a deadline of Friday, February fourteenth. More information can be found on the website. With winter upon us, I want to give a special shout-out to Norm Brumblay and his team, despite the fact that we have been able to go on time so far and, and some people believe that we have been oblivious to the weather. The team has actually been out driving around on roads at all hours and meeting with National Weather Service just to ensure that we are making the best call for students. My husband will be happy when the three-thirty a.m. calls stop. But it looks like we may be busy again at the end of this week and all of us, I know, are starting to use our meteorology skills. So I would like to wish everyone a Happy New Year and a So I would like to wish everyone a Happy New Year and I'm looking forward to a strong second semester for CMCSS. Mr. Lanier, this concludes my report.
Okay. Guess we're adjourned.